Good evening. I would like to call to order the study session for the City Council, for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for Monday, August eighteenth, 2025. Thank you all for joining us. We have, we have five items on our study session this, this evening. We have on item number one, the 2025 private activity bond allocation. We have a discussion on Proposition 123 update and expedited review process. We have a Dr. Cog Regional Housing Needs Assessment. We have a housing update, and we have a building code update. And we will begin, as we usually do, with public comments. I have no one signed up in the City Hall to, to speak, and I'll check with the clerk and see if anybody has joined us online, and I see that as a negative. And with the council's permission, I would like to exchange Agenda Item Number Two and Number Three together. We have our Dr. Cog folks here, and I think they'd like to make their presentation and get home. So if there's no objections to that, we will move in that fashion. But first, we will start with Agenda Item Number One, that is a 2025 private activity, activity bond allocation. Mr. Cog.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this evening, we are here to hear from Foothills Regional Housing. They are requesting the city's 2025 annual allocation of private activity bonds. We're just getting over $2 million this year. We have a history of designating our allocation to Foothills Regional Housing the last few years. In 1920 and 22, we allocated our private activity bonds to Foothills for Caesar Square, the apartments project, 21 for the Allison Village Affordable Housing Project in Arvada, and 23 and 24 for the Ives Affordable Housing Project. They are here this day. Dana is here this evening to request those for the Ridge Affordable Housing Project, multi-use project, that's what we call it, right?
Yeah.
Danny, just want to make sure your mic's on.
That little button right there, and you're live.
Okay, great. Well, thanks for having us, and thanks for considering this PAB assignment. So for a housing authority, what the private activity bonds allow you to do is create more housing. So there's a certain tool called low-income housing finance, low-income housing credits that we use to finance things. And anything that uses a 4% federal credit, which I know you're already glazing over, but that's one of the main COGS that builds affordable housing, that tool can only be accessed by pairing with private activity bond. So that it's just a, it's a weird nexus, but it's a nexus that exists in tax code. And so we're always seeking out private activity bond so that when we have a project, we have that private activity bond match. Now, in the most recent change in the latest bill, there used to be a 50% test, and so you may have heard that that's changed. It's a 25% test now, and that meant that you had to have 50% of your financing through 4% deals funded through tax-exempt loans, which were directly connected to the private activity bond cap. So as prices were increasing for development costs, as everything is getting more expensive, it squeezed all these deals, right? Because everybody needed to come up with this private activity bond, and sometimes that was the limiter to how many units they could actually build. So now there's a 25% test, so less of your deal needs to be funded with this tax-exempt financing, but it's still tethered to having this private activity bond. So I just wanted to share a couple of numbers with you, because we're looking on Ridge to do three phases of housing, which would include senior housing, multi, multi-family housing, and then some sort of, we're looking at a homeownership model or something that's more connected to the community in a, in a non-rental way. So for those phases, we're thinking we're going to have about $94 million in overall development costs, and that's just based on today's value. And so your private activity bond will help us bundle that, so we can access these 4% credits, because these buildings will not get built with those, without those 4% credits. So sorry to start off the meeting with all of that, because I know that's a lot.
That was an earful. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Questions from council? Councilor Hoppe.
I don't really have a question, just a comment. And the, first, I'd like to say that I appreciate our partnership with Foothills Regional Housing. We've been able to bring affordable housing and attainable housing into our community with our relationship with you. And the, if anyone has driven by the Caesar's apartment complex, you can see that the updates from our private activity bond share over to regional really helped bring that community into, not only is it affordable, but it's, it's affordable and it's quality. So I just want to say, this, this for me is a no-brainer to get this over to you guys. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional discussion on this item? Mr., Councilor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor, and I completely agree that this is money that is well, being well-spent. I did, a couple of weeks ago, I had an opportunity, they had an open house at Caesar Square, and since it's very close to my house, I walked over there and was given a tour of one of the apartments. They do apparently have, I think about 15 vacancies right now. They may have been filled. That was the purpose of the open house a couple of Saturdays ago, but I had a chance to meet the staff over there. They're seen just right on, on top of everything. And the remodeling and the rehabs that were done at that, at that location were just top-shelf, first-rate stuff going on there. The other thing to point out is that the, the, I like to call it Miller Ridge Development instead of just the Ridge Development, because watching that thing move along, I attended a couple of meetings, and if you go by there right now at Ridge and Miller, you can see the old buildings before they can be demolished are covered with a plastic seal, so when they work on removing the asbestos, none of it gets away. It's all contained, and so the, the work will be done to make those facilities, get them ready to be demolished, and then they can start working on building up that, the new development out there, which is going to be really, really exciting, especially the part about the partnership with Red Rock Community College.
Thank you. Councilor Weaver.
I just wanted to say that I fully support this. The, the housing authority has had just great explanations through the things we've been doing the last couple of months, and I just wanted to highlight how helpful that's been, and, and I know that you'll continue to partner with sort of educating our, our, our housing authority as it becomes whatever it's going to be in the future. So thank you for that through these, this spring.
You're welcome. It's great to work with such wonderful partners in your city.
Thank you. Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. The one, the one comment that you made, I just have a question on you, you said homeownership, and traditionally has Foothills done ownership? I thought it was primarily renting.
Yeah, we typically do not do it. We just felt like there might be an opportunity here to partner with somebody who knows what they're doing. So community land trust models, Habitat for Humanity, that kind of thing. So, you know, it's, it's on the table. It's probably like the third phase of what we do, so that wouldn't lead.
I, I would love to, in the future, hear just some updates on any homeownership opportunities and what kind of ideas you guys are thinking about, so please keep some form. Thank you.
Will do.
Thank you. Councilor Ohm, or Councilor Hulting, excuse me.
I know we look alike.
Well, you're from the same district.
Yeah, we're district, too. So thank you. I am very much in support of this. It's been a great partnership with you while I've been on council, and looking forward to seeing what that looks like next. My question for you is, are you approaching other jurisdictions for contributing towards this project?
Yes, so we have an ask out to Arvada. We typically get Jefferson County's private activity bonds, so there are others. We can amass enough to make a difference. So yes, we kind of troll the entire county in order to build up enough to do these deals.
Right, yeah, just given its location, it's great to hear you're talking to Arvada as well. And yeah, so I'm obviously in support of this. I, I like that what you mentioned in your opening statements aligns with our own adopted Affordable Housing Strategic Action Plan that we've been working hard on. So again, the partnership continues to be aligned, and I will be excited to raise my hand in support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other additional discussion on this? Seeing Non-Staff is asking us to reach consensus to assign the city's private activity bond allocation to Front Ridge Regional Housing for the Ridge Affordable Housing Mixed Use Project at approximately Ridge Road and Miller Street. Do we have consensus on that? Place your hand, please. We do? Looks like we have consensus to move that forward.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. We appreciate it. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will go to Agenda Item Number Two. This is Proposition 123 update and the expedited review process. Mr. Cog.
Thank you. Staff? Oh, yeah, we're switching.
Oh, we switched this, I'm sorry.
Dr. Cog's next.
Number three. Okay, number three is the Dr. Cog Regional Housing Needs Assessment.
Thank you.
Yes, that's, that's better. Welcome.
First of all, before we start, I just want to, I hope you realize when you read this memo, and thanks to Shannon and Lauren for putting numerous memos together. It's all about housing, CP, but it really gives you a picture of, of the new mandates that have been put on us by the state. Unfunded mandates, I would have to say, all for good reason. Most people would agree, I think. You know, housing, affordable housing is, is, is a challenge in Colorado, but seeing all these memos in one place and reading them all together, it kind of puts it all in, in one picture. It's like, oh, okay, that's, that's what this is all about, and it's a lot of work. And thankfully, I want to thank council for supporting our housing position with Shannon, because Lauren and I were saying, well, who would do this? Who would get this done? We would probably get it done, but Lauren's hair, hair would be grayer than mine right now. So, but anyway, I just want, I just want to make sure everybody realizes how much work this has been, and, and, and these are, really, these are all new state mandates that have been put on us, a lot of reporting, and a lot of things that we haven't had to do before. So with that, you want to turn it straight to Shannon?
Thanks, Patrick, and thanks for the introduction. Again, I think I met most of you all last July or over the last, or this past July and over the last year, but if I haven't, my name is Shannon. I'm the city's Senior Housing Planner. We also are joined by Caitlin with Dr. Cog. She'll be here to answer any questions you guys have about the first gen item, or the third, but the first of, of the series of topics. So my presentation will be sort of on all of the topics tonight, but I'll pause for discussion for each one. We've set it up so that the first discussion item is the Dr. Cog one, and we anticipate that that'd be the longest ones. You all have the most time for discussion on this one. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is to discuss the two items, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment and Prop 123 expedited review for compliance with that. In addition, we're also providing an update on House Bill 241313, Transit Oriented Communities, and also looping back on a topic that was brought up in July for the Housing Fund and next steps for the Red Ridge Housing Authority. Before we kind of jump into all the topics, I wanted to kind of give an overview of all the things we've done to date and all the things we have moving forward. So housing has shifted dramatically over the last few years, starting from our, our local action with the housing plan, to Prop 123 and the state's first housing fund, to now where we're at, which is implementing the state housing legislation that happened in 2024. Looking ahead, we have a few milestones to complete, including housing needs assessment and action plan compliance, transit-oriented, transit-oriented communities, and also second funding cycle for Prop 123. The first topic tonight is the Regional Housing Needs Assessment and also Senate Bill 24174, which is the Sustainable Affordable Housing Assistance. This bill requires local governments to complete a state-compliant housing needs assessment by December 31st, 2026. Local governments can choose to conduct their own or participate in a regional housing needs assessment. Our existing affordable housing strategy was adopted prior to the passage of the state bill, but it does not meet all the requirements of the state bill. It needs to be updated. So council has two options for compliance, the first being update our affordable housing strategy and action plan by 2026, which would require staff time and funding to do so. The second is participate in Dr. Cog's Regional Housing Needs Assessment, which is what we're going to discuss tonight. If we do decide to participate, this meeting would satisfy the requirements of the state Dr. Cog began this effort in 2023 to establish an objective, data-driven understanding of housing needs for the region, both for current and future populations. The Regional Housing Needs Assessment concluded with a few key findings, one being the region has not produced enough housing to keep pace of population and job growth, housing supply is less than demand in almost every income category, low-income households represent the greatest need for additional housing, and demographic shifts, including an aging population, and smaller household trends will require more diverse housing types. If these things sound familiar, they're also in our housing plan, so we think the Regional Housing Needs Assessment aligns with our strategy as well. Dr. Cog started their analysis with, by looking at five submarkets that aren't based on city boundaries, they're based on census data, specifically the PUMS data, because where people choose to live and work are regional and they go beyond kind of city boundaries. That being said, Wheat Ridge is considered to be in the central market with the north portion and north-central. While our city has unique challenges, we also share our housing demand with Golden, Lakewood, and Denver and other nearby communities. Dr. Cog estimates that over the next 10 years, the region will need to build 223 housing units by 2032. In this central submarket alone, the need is over 71,000 units, and Wheat Ridge's share is smaller, it's only 2,400 units. And this is consistent with our local housing strategy as well. Participating in Dr. Cog's Regional Housing Needs Assessment allows the city to meet the state requirements of, of Senate Bill 24174 without diverting extra resources at this time. It also strengthens our role as a regional housing partner, which is a key principle of our strategy, and also allows us to use this data when we update our, update our housing action plan. Staff recommends participating in Dr. Cog's Regional Housing Needs Assessment to satisfy the state requirements. And with that, we have two questions for council tonight, the first being, do you all agree with staff recommendations to participate in the Regional Housing Needs Assessment? And if so, do you have any comments or questions to share with Dr. Cog tonight?
Okay, we'll start with questions. Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Marion. Thank you for being here. I, I personally think that it is the best ways to participate with the Dr. Cog Regional Housing Needs Assessment, but I do have one question. In the, in the memo under legislative context, it said that the, the bill contains three main components. One of them is a housing needs assessment, the other one is housing action plans, and then the last one is water supply and strategic growth elements. And so I'm just wondering if we are participating with the Dr. Cog, will it also hit that water supply and strategic growth elements? And the reason why I ask that is because I'm also on the Urban Renewal Authority Board, and one of the discussions that we are having around that table is, how are we more strategic with our, with the monies that we have in setting up some areas of our community to where it's not the last man on the, on the totem pole that ends up footing the bill for all of like the water upgrades and the new lift stations and stuff like that, which is how it happens now?
Yeah, so the participation in the Regional Housing Needs Assessment only satisfies the first component, which is the housing needs assessment component. It also doesn't satisfy the housing action plan or what you're talking about, which is the water supply and strategic growth elements. And the third item is really centered around how our comprehensive plan will address water and water planning over the next few years. And so those topics really weren't well-informed tonight.
Right, the city plan will include an appendix that addresses that third part of the state law, and one of the city plan recommendations is that we do coordinated planning with our water districts in the future for exactly that reason. So we're being more proactive and coordinated, both from water and sanitation. So we think we're meeting those other components of the state law through other avenues.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Weaver.
I, I do support participating with Dr. Cog. I was curious, are there any, I've got a couple of questions after this, but are there any drawbacks to participating with Dr. Cog? Or, or, or our, sorry, are our hands tied in any way through this participation? Because I know that, sorry, I'm going to give a little background on that.
Yeah.
Because some of the housing initiatives that did or didn't pass were things that we challenged as a city based on some, some home rule kinds of issues.
Yeah, no, participation in it doesn't supersede or tie us to this. I think it's just, and maybe Dr. Cog, you might know, or Caitlin, you might know more about that, but I don't, as far as I understand, it doesn't, it doesn't tie us to this.
Okay.
Yeah.
And my second question, I, I've had nothing but great contact with Dr. Cog. I worked with them in other, other areas of my life regarding data and things like that. I think they're a super fantastic organization. But to sort of ask the Dr. Cog person that's in the room, why isn't water being considered more? Because I, I think of that as definitely a regional thing that, that Dr. Cog, I, I realize this is not up to you. I'm, I'm asking sort of a, are you thinking about that? Because it's something that's certainly larger than Wheat Ridge and certainly is going to have to be coordinated. I'm on the ag side, so, so I deal with water for agriculture, and we're having to think the same way, and so I'm just curious if Dr. Cog has a plan.
Sure, yeah, that's a great question. I'm happy to answer it, and I, I love all the discussion on how these elements are regional in nature. I think there's kind of two components to tonight's discussion. One is like, there is a goal of being compliant with state legislation. Senate Bill 24174 has a specific pathway for local governments to opt into a regional assessment in order to comply with that legislation. So of course, Dr. Cog, reading that legislation, wanted to offer this opportunity to all of our member governments, so they didn't have to spend their own resources doing their state-compliant local housing needs assessment if they didn't choose for that to be the best use of those resources. There's not that specific pathway mentioned for the strategic growth element, the water element, or for the housing action plan that are also required under 24174. So I would say like, from a compliance standpoint with the legislation, there's, there's not a specific pathway that's been outlined by those legislation for Dr. Cog to provide that pathway to its member governments. However, these topics are regional in nature, and Dr. Cog does want to facilitate that regional coordination. We're also subject to this legislation. We have to update our regional plan called Metrovision with a strategic growth element and a water supply element. So we'll be thinking through like how that can be regionally coordinated. However, it's based on the legislation and the discretion of DOLA regarding, or Department of Local Affairs regarding whether or not any components of.
So we need to push our legislatures, basically. That just, that really answers the question, because it sounds like it hasn't been sort of considered in this legislation, and it sounds like it really needs to be as a, as another step. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor, and this is a really interesting subject. So on the, one question I had just is on the Exhibit 10, the regional submarket graphic that you had showed a slide with. But, yeah, it's on page 16 of that, where it says Exhibit 10 Regional Submarkets, and it's got the, the colors showing, I'm looking at it right now, it's like, you know, northwest and north-central and central. The question I have is the, the southeast, like why, what was the methodology? Why not just east and south is my first question. The second part is, does, having this very large area combined as one region, that how does it, does it have any effect on the results? Because when I'm looking at it, I see like, oh, the south, the southeast, you know, needs a lot more of everything, and it's just, it's so, it's so big. So what was, how did you determine that that was, you were going to combine those two pieces and say, this is southeast? What was that? Was it density? Was it land area?
Yeah, that's a good question. So to calculate, like, yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
So as Shannon was describing, housing markets are regional, so to understand the regional housing need and how that looks like on a local level, the initial step was to calculate regional housing need for the full region and then distribute that down to municipalities. As Shannon was mentioning, you know, people make housing location decisions on things that cross jurisdictional boundaries, commute times, jobs, affordability levels, childcare. So the submarkets are based on like data related to like real-world commute patterns and census data that reflect better how people make housing choices across the region. It's a methodology tactic, like technique, that's meant to take something from a regional scale and help distill it down more to a local scale. So it's just kind of that interim step from like a technical analysis standpoint, rather than going completely from regional to local, that interim step to like help guide the numbers in a more logical way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Hulting.
Thank you, and thanks for coming tonight. I've been tracking this as it's been going through the Dr. Cog board and presentations, and just the complexity of it is, is mind-boggling. So I'm appreciative that Wheat Ridge has an opportunity to opt into this for compliance, because I'm just acutely aware from having been tracking it through Dr. Cog, how hard it would be for us to try and do this. My, my questions are really around, how does this then relate to our compliance with that housing action plans? Because that will then be coming forward. So is it anticipated that participation in this would then segue into participation in a regional housing action plan? And then I'm just going to add my second question kind of within that, is that then how does that backflow into the city in terms of, do we then just amend our own action plan based off of Dr. Cog's findings and actions? So I'm just curious about like sort of how this informs the next step, and then how those steps come back into our, our own work that we've done.
Yeah, those are all really good questions, and, and I can answer them. So the, the reason why we're coming to you all tonight for participation is because we would need to update our housing needs, or our plan by the end of next year for compliance with that December 31st deadline. After that, the housing action plan component is due January 1st, 2028, so they're kind of staggered. We, we don't know right now where our housing plan lands in terms of compliance with the housing action plan component. We anticipate that it might not meet the requirements, just as our housing needs doesn't. But DOLA is just starting to release that guidance now, and so staff doesn't know what that looks like right now. However, we do anticipate that by 2027, it might be beneficial for us to update that plan, just because the plan had a five-year horizon as it was adopted, and that would align with the, the legislature deadlines. The other, the other component is, to answer your first question, to go back to that, participation in this does not satisfy the housing action plan component. So regardless of our participation, we would still have to update the housing action plan and have our own that we implement.
Okay, I guess maybe that was my question, was would Dr. Cog be doing a housing action plan, or would that be something that would be for each individual local jurisdiction to do? do?
Yeah, Dr. Cog is doing a Housing Action Plan, as far as I understand, but we would have to do our own anyway.
I can add a little more context. So it's a little bit of the same two-part answer that I gave before. It's like, there's a one part, people or communities are trying to comply with Senate Bill 24-174, and that doesn't give a clear pathway for local communities to opt into a regional assessment like it does for the needs assessment. It gives that clear pathway. Dr. Cog is working on a regional housing strategy that is meant to like harmonize like all the housing efforts within local jurisdiction and understand like how they're working on a regional system and what like regionally coordinated efforts would support the housing landscape in the Denver region. That doesn't seem to meet the requirements of 24-174. Again, we're always looking for ways to support our member governments if there is a pathway, but there seems to be components of the state legislation that would need to be completed at a local level. So as Shannon mentioned, DOLA, Department of Local Affairs is still working on their guidance and we don't know what that full picture is going to look like yet. But at this point, it seems to be that there will need to be some actions from each local municipality in order to comply with that component.
Additional discussion on this item from counsel? Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. This, really not where, sure where to start on this, this, it's such a big sort of amorphous issue that trying to get a hold of any one part of it is very difficult for me. But I guess my first question is, it's not a question, it's more of a statement. It appears that, that where we are right now, given the legislation that the state has passed, we don't have much choice unless we were to join the lawsuit that Arvada, Greenwood Village, Aurora, Glendale, Lafayette, and Westminster have filed specifically against these, these bills that have passed based on their superseding our home rule authority. And so I guess the question is, how will that, if this lawsuit that Arvada and the other six cities are moving forward, if that proceeds and they get a favorable ruling, would that allow Weiridge to simply say, okay, we're not going to participate in, in this discussion anymore?
I'll take that one. I, I think on this particular bill, it is so aligned with the work that we've been doing at a policy level with our housing strategy. I don't have that concern. I, I have those questions when it comes to zoning code amendments, but because this is really about planning and policy and action plans, which we already have and we already intended to probably update on the five-year horizon, I think, I think we're in comfortable territory here with a Dr. Cog plan that aligns with our action plan and our own action plan that we've been comfortably implementing over the last few years.
The, the lawsuit, I guess, is directed at the two bills, 24-1313 and 24-1304, which are not included in what we're discussing.
Right, those are the zoning code amendments, I believe.
Okay, again, it just appears like we're, we are kind of in a position where there isn't a whole lot of choice for us to proceed. I mean, we, we need to participate in order to be in compliance.
Yeah, this, this bill, I think, I can't remember now what the carrots and sticks are for all the different bills, but you know, not all communities adopted a housing strategy. We were ahead of the curve on that. So we were mostly in compliance, but when they said, here's what that includes, Dr. Cog was ahead of the curve too, I think we'd all started our housing plans before the state law came into effect. So at this point, it's, it's so nominal in terms of what we'd need to do to be in compliance. It felt like it aligned with the policy direction we've been receiving from this body all along. So it didn't feel like the one that we needed to question.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Additional discussion on this item. Staff has asked us a couple of questions. Number one, does counsel agree with staff's recommendation to participate in Dr. Cog's Regional Housing Needs Assessment for the purpose of complying with SB 24-174? Do we have consensus on that? We have consensus, thank you. And item number two is if so, does counsel have any comments regarding the Regional Housing Needs Assessment that they would like to share with Dr. Cog in addition to what we've talked about? Counselor Holtein.
I have a question. It's, it's kind of a big, broad question, given just sort of like the enormity of what's being discussed here. If that was a question we had, could we email it to our staff to pass along? Or are you asking for discussion now for us to come up with if we have any questions?
Well, I, you know, it's never too late to provide a suggestion, I think, until the, you know, until it's published or whatever we do, you know, Dr. Cog, we take a vote to stamp the report. But, you know, I think if there are creative suggestions out there, that we've got a great staff at Dr. Cog and they're always working on issues like this. Counselor Weaver.
I would just like it noted that several of us brought up the water issue, and even though it's not mandated, it is something that needs to come from all directions to our legislators that, that has to be part of a, of a housing solution. Thanks.
Thank you. Then on item number two, do we have consensus on that? I guess we don't need consensus on that if we don't have any questions. So that's maybe, maybe a moot point. So anyway, we approve that. So I want to, you know, I sit on the Dr. Cog Board and I think when this came, you know, there was a lot of consternation when, when this legislation was going through the, through the legislature because it had, it had been through the year before unsuccessfully as an omnibus sort of bill. And so when it started breaking it down, it became more, more obvious that, that the member governments that were there could benefit from a regional needs assessment because that was going to be part of the legislation. So, you know, at the time I thought, well, we've got ours, probably won't opt into this, but apparently we, you know, would need to do some more homework and that would be cost and expense for us. So I think we're really grateful to have Dr. Cog and the work that they do, you know, to put this forward. So, and I have no, no doubts that we can, we can provide a, an action plan that, that comports to do everything we need to do. I think we're doing it now. So anyway, thank you for that discussion. Caitlin, thank you being, for being with us tonight. We appreciate it. Okay, so that takes care of item number three. Now we're going to reverse ourselves and go back to item number two. This is Proposition 123, update and expedited review process. Mr. Goff. Shannon.
Thanks, Mayor. So into the second item of tonight, this is, is meant to be an informational update on where we're at and also looking ahead to what we need to do if we want to participate in the second funding cycle. So in 2023, we made the commitment to build 218 affordable units by 2026. Right now, we're on track to build 98 units, just shy of our original commitment with the Ives to development. Even though we're shy of that commitment, we have received the $3 million in our community, specifically to Foothills Regional Housing for their Ridge Road project that they just presented on as well, and for our open gov permitting software for the city. So it's been beneficial to our community and I think, looking forward to remain eligible for the second funding cycle, the city would need to develop or codify a state compliant expedited review process for affordable projects by end of 2026. The expedited review process does require a decision within 90 days of the complete application of a site plan, submittal, and would apply to development projects with at least 50% affordable units and affordable to rental units at or below 60% AMI and homeownership units at or below 100% AMI. The state is currently offering an early adoption incentive program for cities and local governments that codify an expedited review process early. So if the city does want to, want to codify a policy by the end of 2025, will be eligible to receive up to $50,000 in a grant to work on other state housing initiatives. Right now, we are currently piloting the process with Foothills Regional Housing for their Ives to development that will help us secure that 98 units for Prop 123 commitment. Piloting the process early does allow the city to troubleshoot the challenges that may arise. Right now, we think the challenges may, may be within the civil construction documents with engineering, so we're kind of working through the timing of that and trying to hit that 90-day decision. If counsel supports this effort, staff will bring forward a resolution in the next few months and then bring code amendments in early spring to help satisfy the state's requirement for the grant incentive program. We have worked with DOLA on this and they did confirm this would satisfy that. Just a short presentation on this one, but happy to open this up for council discussion.
All right, we'll start with questions with the Counselor Weaver.
Can I just add one, one thing, Mr. Mayor? Sorry, just to put this in context again, Shannon had that timeline at the very beginning. Prop 123 predated a lot of these state bills and with a major carrot. So by opting in and playing, not only committing to housing units, but also committing eventually to expedited review, the city and anybody who develops in the city gains access to the state's housing fund, which has significantly, significant funds. We've had, it's on the memo, we've had access to that by virtue of our commitment. So this one felt very pure at the time. It was sort of, again, pre a lot of the legislature's programs. It's very independent of that. They're all getting mired in our minds. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear, how it's distinct from some of the, what feels sometimes like the more heavy-handed legislative approach. Thanks.
I'm not sure, nothing is clear in this arena, quite frankly, but, but with that, I'll go to Counselor Weaver.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we jumped in early on this stuff in the first place and I really think we should pursue this. This is a, quite a bit amount of money and, and I'd love for, for it to be opened up for us since this is where we wanted to go in the first place. So I'm fully supportive of this. Thanks.
Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of years ago, I was a part of, it's called the Peer Community Leadership Exchange, the pickle that Jefferson County Economic Development Corporation does. We went down to San Antonio, Texas, because one of the topics we were studying was affordable housing and how to deliver affordable housing efficiently into your community. And San Antonio had delivered several units of affordable housing into their community. The developers that we spoke with, so we met with a lot of the developers that had developed that housing and their, their whole thing, the expedited review process was a significant tool for them to be able to get to the market. And part of it, if, if, if you think about it, when, when developers buy land, then they're holding a loan on that, they're paying money on that, and then they've got phased out in their building and they're paying money on that. And so when you're sitting in a review process that takes a long time, you're spending money that you don't need to spend. And so I absolutely support this. One of the developers called it the easy button, the Staples easy button. And, and I think that it should be best practice in, in all communities.
Thank you. Counselor Holtein.
Thank you. I have a couple of just clarifying questions. One is, I saw in the, in the presentation and that it was a $50,000 award, and then I heard you say up to 50,000. It's a hair to split, but I'm just curious, is it, would we be getting 50,000 or we would be getting somewhere in the range between some other number and 50,000?
Zero.
Yeah, zero.
Yeah, my understanding, it's, it's 50,000.
Okay, so we'd either get zero or 50,000.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. I think it's, it's confusing. So if we don't do it by end of this year and if we do it in the spring, which the resolution this fall would, would satisfy that, but if we said no right now and did it in the spring, we would get up to 50,000. So that's just dependent on how much funds remain in the bucket from the state.
And then this is going to sound like a nightmare question, but what is a project? And I ask that in that we have Lutheran coming on and so we are going to be having a mix of market rate and affordable housing coming in that. So would Lutheran as a whole qualify as the project or would it be like specific buildings within that? Like, I mean, just because we have such a large infill coming down the pipe, I'm just sort of curious, like, how do we define project in this context? And I know what a project.
No, no, it's a great question. We have worried about that, right? How are people going to sort of submit an application in order to qualify this? Because time is money. And it will be a very small percentage of projects that qualify for expedited review. I think you have to have, so the, the project is the building permit, the site plan, the civil construction set, sort of each individual component of an entitlement is, is a standalone clock. And the, the developments which are eligible for those have to have at least 50% of the units be deed restricted affordable at under 60% AMI. So mostly foothills, regional housing projects, potentially, you know, if there's a single building at Lutheran that is senior affordable at a certain AMI, then it, its site plan and permit would qualify, but not the totality of the entitlements we'll do out there.
That is helpful. And then you, you may not be able to answer this, but I'm just curious, I mean, we, when we approved participation in this project, this program, we were, you know, enthusiastically optimistic that we would be able to meet it and we haven't come close. And I'm just curious if that's been experienced sort of across the board or if you're hearing stories of municipalities that were actually able to achieve that pledge? Just if, if we're going to be re-engaging in this work, I want to be just reality checking, like our ability to actually perform on it.
Yeah, I think it's unrealistic that a lot of cities will be able to meet their commitment. We're hearing from the county that they're not going to be able to or might not be able to. Other neighboring cities might not be able to, and a lot of it has to do with the funding for these projects. Long housing tax credit, like Dana mentioned, has sort of a three-year cycle for these things. They have to apply it three years and then they get it maybe the third round or the fourth round. And so I'm not sure what the state is going to do if a lot of cities aren't able to meet their commitment. We've met with them and their hands are tied with the way the legislature, legislation was written on this one.
I just would like to remind us all that we do have a legislative committee now and that could be an issue that we take up around if, if other municipalities are having similar conversations around if that number is actually like feasible for municipalities to meet because if not, then we're all chasing money we can't get. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. I think definitely right now, it's a time we have to fight for dollars and so I think this is a great idea. I'm on board. The biggest, the biggest thing I see is we, and this is towards Director Mickey Lack, is that we, we need to have a clear path, time is money. We need, the developers need to clear path forward, predictable code that, that they can get through and then that staff can get through. And I want to, I want to, I guess assurances, I don't want to just dump this on staff and say, yeah, full steam ahead. And, and yes, legacy's coming up and then we find ourselves in a, in a pickle. And so, you know, I guess, is there, is there a plan B? You know, one, the staff, do you feel like staff, you have the capacity? And I know we're landlocked. And then B, do you, is there a, you know, the pressure relief where you, if you needed to, you could hire an outside consultant to help take some of that, that lift? I want to make sure that, you know, that I'm not dumping this on you and saying, this is what we want and then we're just stressing out staff. So that's my, my question that comes.
Yeah, I appreciate you recognizing the impact it will have on our team. I think one of the silver linings of this is that it makes it a lot easier to say no to every other project who asks for expedited review, that we can only expedite affordable housing projects. Every single project acts to be bumped to the top of the queue. Our current, we quote projects right now, six to eight weeks, we're often getting comments back in four to six weeks. The reason for those timeframes is the volume of the queue, the size of our current staff. And frankly, infill development is complex. You are trying to meet grades on all sides of a project. It's the engineering part that takes the longest review by far. Landscaping, lighting, architecture, those are pretty quick, they're usually done in two. It's, it's the grading and engineering. So we, you know, we, we hopped on the idea of, when we knew Foothills was going to have some projects before our obligatory deadline, we wanted to test this. We're a team of high performers that now has the new permit software and it felt like a fun challenge. And then when there was a financial win for trying to test it early, I think our team's been really excited about it. It's also, it's also our developers who are challenged to, the clock doesn't stop when we. It's also our developers who are challenged to, the clock doesn't stop when we hand it back. The clock is on both parties. And so we've essentially created some framework by which we can bring an applicant and their engineers and team in and say, hey, if we're committing to 90 days, you are too. Pick the right engineer for this project. And so, you know, I think it'll put a little bit of a strain on everyone, but I think it's achievable, and we're excited to test that here in the next, you know, the runway that we have, 15 months or so before it's required. So we'll report back for sure.
Councilor Snell.
Thank you, Mayor. Just thinking ahead a little bit, first of all, I'm definitely in support of this. But thinking ahead a little bit, I was reading about the $50,000 if we implement the compliant process by the end of this year. And there's mention of helping with the cost of the housing linkage fee, the Nexus linkage fee. Is that something that we, like, if this goes ahead and we hit that milestone, we get to have input on? Or are there other things that we also could earmark that for in relation to this as well?
Yeah, I think that's a really good question. I think staff has seen that as being an immediate need, but we're open for discussion if you want to talk through that a little bit more.
No, I thought that is a really good idea. We talked about that back in July, and so I think it just kind of makes sense, because that data can help us, you know, moving forward. But I just wondered if there was anything else. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Holtein.
Thanks. What happens if the clock runs out?
The 90-day clock?
Yeah.
So I think that's the questionable questions, really. The 90-day is a decision. So leading up to that, you know, part of my role will be to kind of monitor and coordinate and collaborate with both parties on this. And so I think there's going to be a lot of high touchpoints before that 90-day happens. But if at some point, whether it's 30 days or 60 days, we get there, and we're not getting what we want from the applicant, or the city needs more time, there's two options that the city, or there's two options in the process. There's a one-time 30-day extension from the city, or a one-time developer extension. So that's an option, too. But we don't anticipate the 90 days to occur before any of those decisions are made. And we can also deny an application, and that's part of the 90-day clock or decision for that.
Okay, so we're not facing any type of punitive measures if we don't make the 90 days? I mean, is there an enforcement of that?
Yeah, I think enforcement is still something we don't know about, and hopefully, DOLA will release more guidance on that.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. So if we're eligible to reapply in 2028, are we taking 2027 off because we didn't meet that 3% mark? Okay. And so if we're taking 2027 off, do we have to grow that 3% when we're eligible again? Or is it 6% because we're supposed to do it over 27 and 28?
Yeah, that's a really good question. It's the same amount, but we have one less year to meet that commitment. Yeah.
I want to revisit Lauren's comment, and I'm going to mix a couple of metaphors, you know. I've been in the building business, and we've tried to get permits. And it's a sort of a tennis match, if you will. The ball's going back and forth across the court between the building department and the entitlement agency, and the contractor and his consultants. And the other metaphor is, and it sounds like it's not, like a real chess match where you make a move and you hit the clock, and now it's on somebody else's. How are you going to resolve that?
It's a great question. We had a lot of vocal jurisdictions wishing, asking the state to make it more of a chess match, so it's the city's 90 days, because we have significantly less control over the development team or water sewer districts, for example. Our approach so far, and we're testing this as we speak, is to do multiple pre-application meetings. We historically do one, and then you submit your application. We'll be doing a series of pre-application meetings or sort of pre-screening, so that when we get, the clock starts when we say it's a complete application. And so we'll be, you know, I think we're pretty good these days about putting our written expectations out, but we won't start that clock until both parties feel ready that we're at the starting line and ready to sort of run that maze or start that tennis match. So, you know, the overall engagement period from the day a foothills walks in the door and says, we've got an idea for a project, to the issuance, is likely going to be shorter, but we are going to front-load that pre-process to make sure that when we start the 90 days, everyone is set up for success. Yeah.
So when they walk in with an idea for a project, the clock doesn't start then?
No.
The clock starts when you've got full CDs?
Complete application.
Complete application, all the CDs, all the civil and...
Yep.
And...
Yep. And we get a separate 90 days for the site plan, and for the civil set, and for the building permit, which is great, because we historically dovetail those anyways, right? You want to get your big comments for the site plan before you refine your civils, before you submit your construction docs. So it will allow us to continue that dovetail approach with Shannon's help, coordinating all those simultaneous clocks. So we've had the same questions, and we've talked, you know, knowing that foothills is probably the primary beneficiary of this, it's been a collaborative approach of how can we make this work for both of us?
Yeah.
They do have the option to opt out. Any developer can say, that's crazy, I can't do that, my team can't do that. But we're anticipating that would be there.
All right, thank you. Councilor Ohm.
Yeah, one last question. Do we, do the fees that we are charging for these, either Concept One or multiple concepts, are we good? Are we, do we have enough that's covering staff's time?
Our entitlement fees have never covered staff's time. Some communities do, sort of keep track of hours, that's never been our approach. So I, you know, I think we're spending the same amount of time, probably. We're just bumping them up in the queue every time. Yeah.
Additional questions or comments on this item? Staff is asking us to, staff is recommending that we move forward with the resolution stating the city's intent to implement an expedited review policy for affordable projects by the end of 2025, to access early adoption incentive funds, and maintain the eligibility for Prop 123 funding. Do we have consensus on that? We do. That's all I've got. All right, Shannon, thank you very much. Okay, with that, we're going to Agenda Item Number Four. This is Housing Updates. You want to just...
Shannon, keep on going.
Can't get rid of me yet.
Okay.
No, I have a lot of things to talk about. The next set of topics, arguably maybe the most complex, are the state housing legislation. So we wanted to kind of give you an update, you know, based on what we've worked together on this year. We have submitted compliance reports for House Bill 241007, which is occupancy. We have removed parking minimums and codified changes to ADUs. Staff has already, staff has submitted compliance reports for House Bill 241313, Transit Oriented Communities. And we have submitted our certification form for ADU Supportive Jurisdiction. So we've been working really hard this year on all of the state housing legislation. I wanted to thank you all for working on those as well. Well, we haven't heard from DOLA, but we'll hear from them soon, sort of on where we're at in meeting those recently passed deadlines. In March, we briefly introduced House Bill 241313, which is Housing in Transit Oriented Communities. But at that time, there wasn't much known about that bill. Since then, DOLA has released a lot of resources and tools related to that bill and how cities can comply. So the intent of House Bill 241313 creates a category of local governments called Transit Oriented Communities, and requires those communities to align local zoning with regional transit investments. There are several elements of the bill that require specific action and analysis. Because zoning regulations vary by city, the state has established a standardized formula with a minimum density of 40 dwelling units per acre in state-designated areas known as transit areas. The state has designated five areas in Wheat Ridge, shown on the map in purple. Those areas include Arvada Ridge, Ward Station, Wadsworth, Sheridan, Harlan, and, which are all along high-frequency transit. And in Wheat Ridge, we've long recognized that local zoning should align with regional transit. And over the last 10 to 15 years, we have updated our major corridors, like Wadsworth Boulevard and Ward Station area, to reflect that transit-oriented density. And so we believe, and we've worked with the state too, on these resources, but we believe that our past efforts have positioned us well for this new law, as staff does not anticipate any zoning changes are needed at this time. Looking ahead, the next report is not due until the end of next year, and full compliance is not required until end of 2027. So right now, the bill is really complex. It has a lot of elements, like transit areas, transit centers, zoning capacities, and all these things that are hard to kind of understand and digest. But I think we wanted to come to council with an update that we don't anticipate making any zoning changes in order to comply with that bill. And we think it's important to inform you guys of that. And we'll know by the end of next year whether we need to make any changes, but we've been working with the state on that. And then our final topic is just about the housing fund. We wanted to kind of close the loop on this topic that was brought up in July as a way to follow up on it. Staff understands that this is an important topic for council, and we, and the implementation of the housing plan, and we want to explore this topic with you all further in 2026. That discussion will include a look into the uses for the housing fund, based on recommendations from our housing plan, including gap financing for affordable projects, NOAA preservation program, ADUs, or first-time home buyers. We'd also like to reengage the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority to play a more active role in shaping housing policy for the city, whether in its current form or in a new advisory capacity. And this kind of, wanted to look back on the timeline again and just reflect on all the stuff we have talked about tonight, including all the state housing legislation, regional, local, and statewide housing initiatives. We'll return early next year to discuss those housing fund uses, the next study, and any updates for the state housing legislation.
Questions from council? Councilor Holtein.
Thanks. If you could go back a slide. I realize that I'm registering a thought well in advance of 2026. But, well, so we've got our funds, and then there's the funds that the state's making available, like, through compliance with the variety of different legislation. Could we contemplate, as we get prepared for 2026, for that ADU, for our ADU policy? I know that one of the major obstacles for building ADUs in the city is the need to, like, have a separate water tap and do all of that. And I know we're dependent on a report from Martin Martin that I think is used throughout the county. Am I correct on that, Patrick, Lauren?
On what?
Yeah, that the recommendation for, like, not being able to share...
You should get dependent on the district as well, and not every district is the same.
Okay.
Some, I think, are allowing shared caps.
They've treated it slightly differently, and if it's attached or detached, it's going to need...
So that is the water districts? It's not something we could do our own report on and have our own opinion of?
Probably have our opinion, but we don't control. It's our district, it's not a water...
We have to present each water district.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm just, I'm registering that that, like, we can do a lot around ADUs, but until that gets resolved, it's a significant barrier, so, okay, thank you.
Additional questions or discussion on this item? I had one, talk to me about, we have a, in the charter, we have a density requirement or limitation? But what is that?
The charter density cap is 21 units per acre in any area not exempted from that cap. So part of the reason we're compliant with the TOC is because voters in 2009-ish exempted Wadsworth and the train station area from that charter cap. So that helps tremendously in our compliance with that bill. And, you know, it's kind of cool to look back and see in hindsight all the policy decisions that you and your predecessors in the community have done. When Fast Track's got approved, not all communities saw that terrain coming, literally. And we did, and I think we were all pleasantly surprised to be like, oh, it worked.
So the 40, the 40 units per acre is an average over the whole...
Average, over all those purple areas.
All the transit, the TODs?
Yes. Yeah, if we had to meet it individually in each purple blob there, we wouldn't. But because we have the exempted areas on Wads and by the train station in total, we do.
So we can just really pack those like nobody's business? Okay? Excellent. Any additional discussion on this item? I don't believe we need to make any decisions on this one.
It's an update.
Just an update, so, thank you very much. Shannon, thank you. Is that...
Thank you.
Are you getting off the stage now? Is that...
She's done.
Oh, my.
I think I'm done, yeah.
You did a great job, so, that's great. Okay, thank you very much. So that takes us to Agenda Item Number Five, which is the Building Code Update section. Mr. Goff.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Another big topic, but it's time to update our codes. We're currently using the 2018 IVCs, and we're gonna, we're proposing to update to... Yeah, we're proposing updates 2024. Yes, guess, oh, they got their own names. Look at, they brought their own name tags and everything.
All right.
And I did send an email out to you today, if you haven't seen it yet. But Renee is our chief building official with Charles Abbott. They are reassigning her a bit, but we're still going to be able to pull her in when we need her. And Steve is going to be our new COO, so he's with Charles Abbott as well, so we're happy about that. But Renee has been doing a great job. She's committed to helping us get our codes updated before the end of the year. So that's why we're here this evening, so...
Yes.
You want to go?
Although, yeah. Thank you, yeah, we have a depth of experience. We also have our fire marshal sitting in the back there, Stephen Parker, representing our Vada Fire District. Thanks for coming tonight. Everybody in this room, fire and building, bring a tremendous amount of experience. It's a fun process to go to. I'll be our spokesperson, and they will answer all your technical questions. I do want to share just generally, because we do this only every six years or so, building codes, I recognize, are very in the weeds. If you've seen the code book, it is about three feet of bookshelf space for our code book. So I recognize that this is inherently very technical, talking about the minutia here. But the next time you'll see this will be in ordinance, and so we don't want you to be surprised about some of the local amendments that you see in there. Our philosophy in general, I think, has evolved as a community over time, and particularly with the input of the Charles Abbott team. Renee says this a lot, our building division, our current philosophy, is that we're really a part of the construction team. We're not here to be a barrier, we're here to be a bridge. We want to be the collaborative partner on somebody's project to get them through the code, through the permit, through their CO. And it's been, it's been fun. I think our, you know, having CAA in our offices has helped our internal team and our customers tremendously. So the purpose, obviously, tonight is to proceed with adapting codes to get your feedback on fire sprinklers specifically, and then sort of the batch of other local amendments that we're making. So I'll give a quick overview. Because Mr. Parker is present, in case you have questions on sprinkling, we'll do fire sprinklers first, and then talk through any questions you've got on our sort of batch of updates. One of our most primary goals, sort of driving this update process, is ease of use for our customers and our contractors. And you'll see that manifest in two specific ways with this update. Number one, we're consolidating all of the administrative provisions into one place. So when you get the ordinance, it will look long, but it's essentially a recitation of Chapter One of the International Building Code and all of our local amendments, which are currently, if you've looked through it, sprinkled throughout the municipal code. I think we can do better by all of our customers and users by taking that approach. And then when it comes to local amendments, what we've really been focused on is intent. When customers and contractors have to learn the local amendments of every jurisdiction, when we have to educate customers and contractors on a plethora of local amendments, I think our team feels like it is, it is super important that we be able to explain why. Why is this rule different in Wheat Ridge than in the three feet of base books that they have spent their whole careers trying to learn? And so you'll see in our recommendations that we are recommending stripping some of those things back where we... of those things back where we couldn't find a good breadcrumb from our predecessors of why it was different, or if it was a policy goal that didn't make any sense. You'll also see that we keep a lot of our local amendments the same. We didn't even raise them for discussion, things specific to the mechanical ventilation of a marijuana cultivation facility, or the ability to use a church as an emergency shelter. So we've kept with, you know, absent sort of big pivots in our local landscape, we've kept the local amendments that we knew were still relevant and important, and of course, those that are specific to our climate and our geography. So I just wanted to share a little bit of our sort of overall approach for this code update cycle. We'll jump into fire sprinklers, if that's okay. So we are, if you're following along the memo, it's Page Seven of that memo and also Attachment Two. Historically, in Wheat Ridge, this is always a topic of discussion when we come to building code updates, because it's one of the most substantive local amendment that a community can make, that builders have really strong opinions on. They don't tend to have any opinions on the rest of our local amendments. What we did this year is send out a survey to our development community and to our water districts and engage our fire districts. You saw a lot of that feedback in Attachment Two. Not surprisingly, like in years past, there's not real consensus on where to go in Wheat Ridge when it comes to the requirement to put automatic sprinklers in our smaller residential construction types of single-unit duplex and townhomes. We have historically not required automatic sprinklers in those. You can opt to put them in, and as you've seen in the memo, for those who do that, we have a specific type of sprinkler system that we'd like people to use. Our development community and our building code advisory board, should have mentioned earlier, we met with them last week. We got Barry in the weeds, had a productive meeting. Our development community and the B-Cab, we call them, are aligned and preferring that sprinklers continue to not be required, certainly optional, anyone could put them in. Our water districts, you know, don't have a strong opinion one way or the other. Their feedback was really, if you go down that route, here's what we've learned from our peer communities over the last few years. Our fire districts have obviously requested that sprinklers be required in all residential construction, and if you saw, they also commented on Wheat Ridge Speaks and noted that, you know, if if nothing, please consider townhomes. So maybe that's a baby stepway into this requirement. I think what we're seeking on this particular topic from council is is direction on whether we maintain our current approach, not require, or if we move towards requiring them in certain housing types like townhomes. I'll pause there. I think while Stephen Parker is here, in case you have questions for him, we can maybe have a discussion on this specific topic, and then we can switch gears into sort of the wide range of topics in our other local amendments.
Okay, good. Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Lauren. So it was a part of the discussion the last time that we updated our building codes and the sprinklers was a large portion of that discussion. From the memo, the information that I gathered was that our peer communities do not do not require sprinklers in anything that is not a multifamily. Is that correct?
It's it's a mixed bag. Yep. So increasingly, communities are talking about this mostly because we're all sort of in the same cycle of updating to the 24. Lakewood has required more, Edgewater has required more, but I'm not aware of a community that's requiring all building types yet.
Are those communities requiring townhouses?
Lakewood is. I'm looking at Stephen because he's got experience on this now. And Arvada is considering it. If you want to, if you want to join at the mic or pop up, yeah. Thank you.
Makes me, is this mic on?
Yes.
It makes me feel important standing up here. So currently, as Lauren had mentioned, that more and more communities are requiring residential sprinklers as part of their base code. So recently, within the last couple of years, Lakewood has done it, Broomfield, Superior, Erie, Lafayette. Those are, Golden has required it for some time, and same with the city of Westminster. So increasingly, more in the Denver metro area outside of the larger urban municipalities are doing.
Thank you. What is the current requirement for fire separation? Is it still four hours, or is it?
For townhomes?
Mm-hmm.
One hour.
One hour.
Will you?
One hour with sprinklers.
One hour with sprinklers. Without sprinklers, what is the?
Two hours, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. So I guess I would just say, it was my opinion then, it's my opinion now, that I think that townhouses would be an important housing product to have sprinklers in. At the time, though, none of the our peer communities were adopting it, and we were also at a time where we were attempting to attract more building into our community, and so it would make us an outlier. And so that was part of the decision to not do it then. I am, but I just would say that I'm I'm supportive either way.
Mayor Protim Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I I think, at least reading the comments and look at the memo and 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 even hearing Councilor Hoppe's perspective, I do think as we go forward, I think townhomes, I believe we should look at, including, because you're talking about multiple homes together, it's it's not what we consider multifamily, but it is multifamily, right? You're talking about shared walls and and people living together. So I would like to absolutely make sure that we're including in there, but for single-family homes and for duplexes, I don't think we're we're quite there yet. You know, Wheat Ridge is mostly built out, we're gonna have Lutheran Campus, and we're gonna have a couple other infill projects, but we're not gonna have that much more, I don't believe, in in the next few years built out. So I would like to look at for townhomes for for that multifamily-type units, but for a single family, I think we should go ahead and keep it the way it is. Thank you.
Councilor Hulteen.
Thank you. I'm gonna agree with this. I support requiring sprinklers in townhomes for a couple of reasons. One is a lot of our townhome products are three stories high, and so egress is more challenging in the event of a fire. The rest of our single family is typically almost ubiquitously one or two stories. So in the event of a fire, that third-story egress seems more impactful on a townhouse. And then other reasons cited with shared walls. And some of the reasoning that was presented to us tonight around the increased cost for sprinkling, I think with a townhome product where you have repeated plans, some of that, like engineering and design costs, gets dispersed a little bit more. And it also has a really positive impact on insurance. So while there might be some higher upfront housing costs, it actually, over time, in insurance, can turn out to be a cost savings. So those are my reasons. I mean, it's nice to hear other jurisdictions are coming to the same conclusion, but for me, it's that third-story egress, it's insurance over the long run, and I think some of the cost impacts that have been cited actually, like, would pencil out differently for townhouse products. So I am in support of townhomes. I mean, in an ideal world, I'd like it all sprinkled, but I had an aunt who lost everything she owned to a fire, and she was in a single-family home in the middle of Alaska, and it just devastated her for decades. So I know the impact a fire can have on a on a person and a household. But right now, I'm comfortable and would strongly recommend doing the townhomes. Thank you.
Councilor Rome.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions. One, try to make like, what is the what is the smallest dimension in any zone, any type of building we have between like that and another building, you know, just real roughly?
The smallest, what did you say?
Just dimension, like between, yeah, like you have two buildings, any any zone, any size, like what is the smallest dimension?
Um, typically, three to five feet.
Okay. And then?
Well, it's it's three to five feet to the property line, so you're talking six to 10 feet between buildings. You can you can get all the way to the property line if you fire eight walls and have no windows and stuff, but typically, I say you're seeing between six and 10 feet between buildings.
I'm definitely in favor of the the townhomes, of of having sprinklers in those. The one question I have, so this is for new construction.
Correct.
How would it affect, would it ever affect ADUs? You know, somebody, no? Okay, thank you.
Yep. I'm sorry, I should qualify unless the ADU is more than 150 feet away from where the fire truck can park, because that's how long the hoses are, right? And you're looking at me.
Nailed it. You've listened to us enough.
Councilor Weaver.
Thanks. This is something I live in fear of all the time, because I live in a 100-year-old building, and I wish very much that that I could retrofit it with sprinklers. And so I'm not gonna die in this ditch. She got to use the train pen, so I'm gonna use the water pen. But I do think we should think about ADUs, because they are close buildings, you know, I I because as I sort of retrofit the farm to think about some of these things, these are things that I know just have to go if I were to ever want to to create an ADU or something like that. So like I said, I I'm not gonna push it, but I think it's very soon that we should consider ADUs and even duplexes, anytime there's a shared wall or or closeness. Because I just want to remind everybody, we are in a corridor of of dry spaces, and even though there's water in those dry spaces, fire can come down that so quickly. And and we basically have veins every couple blocks in our community that a fire could quickly get through into the urban area of Wheat Ridge. So anyway, but I'm definitely supportive of the townhouse and all of that, townhouses and all of that. Thanks.
If I could respond to that comment, too, because I mentioned something in the staff report, but very much in passing. There is a state law about wildland urban interface. It's called the wooie. And that draft state code, the Wildland Urban Interface Code, has only just recently been released. So we will be coming back to building code and to council in partnership with our fire districts to understand, because of the Green Belt Corridor, what code we may need to adopt or amend specifically related to wildfire, which is, you know, not often what can, you know, sprinkles don't always help with wildfires, but we are working on that as a separate parallel track. So the code amendment that we're talking about tonight, and you'll see in October, we'll still have a couple more topics we'll need to come and discuss as a group.
Councilor Snell.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a question, clarifying, our neighboring jurisdictions, do they have across-the-board requirements, or is it just townhomes, or is it just something else?
The ones that I listed, it's it's wholesale. Attached, single-family, duplex, and townhomes.
Got it, okay.
But there are some communities that do it based on townhomes as a starting point and then expand that. I don't recall any that just have townhomes currently, but that's just off of my recollection right now.
Sure, that's great. Thank you. So I would definitely agree with adding townhomes, and I appreciate Councilor Weaver's take on this. I do feel like we've seen too many communities that have just been ravaged by by fire really close to us. So I would be in favor of discussing adding more later, but I will definitely support adding townhomes to this right now. Thank you.
Mayor Protim Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilor Weaver's question brought up a question for me as well. Sometimes when you update your house, you have to, you hit a threshold where you have to update your electric, or you have to hit a certain. So if you're, if we wholesale decided to do this and somebody was remodeling their house, would they then have to add sprinklers, or would that, or is that not included?
I would say typically no, because that would be governed a lot by the existing building code, which would provide exemptions for that. So so typically, no.
Okay. Because, I mean, that seems like it would add quite a bit of a challenge to like a 1950s style ranch home to add sprinklers just because they're doing a remodel on their basement or something like that. And I'd I'd hate to have that, like, trigger a big, you understand what I'm saying, like that that could be a big can of worms for some of our residents if they weren't expecting that, so.
Yeah, I have I have experience from California, and that particular type of amendment is a special amendment to the code. The code basically deals with new construction. Your residential code is about new construction. The existing building code is existing buildings in which you add, alter, or repair them. And that's not a base in the existing building code. You'd have to do a special amendment to do that.
Okay, thank you. That that would be a big no for me if that was the case, so thank you.
Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand Councilmember Weaver's point about the ADUs, but I guess what I would say is ADUs in in general are already expensive to build, and depending on what water district you're in, you may have to have your own tap, like Councilwoman Hulteen brought up. And and so I don't know that necessarily sprinkling them is the solution, but my question is, I know that when I built my commercial building on 38th Avenue, and there was a residential above the office, we had to put a four-hour fire rating, we were required for a four-hour fire rating between the two. And so what I'm wondering is, is there opportunity maybe to require a longer fire rating if there's like an attached ADU or an above-garage ADU, something like that? Is that something that we would want to look at?
And you can certainly add that amendment. There's there's nothing that precludes you from amending the code to a greater fire-resistant rating between units. And probably because of the type of business you had versus the residential, those, that fire rating varies.
Right.
It depends on the hazard level of the business.
Councilor Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to build on what Councilmember Hoppe just said. You know, the existing inventory of our community is generally old, talking about the houses. And there's been a lot of a lot of interest in the last, you know, 10 years around popping tops and expanding, and we've now brought in this ADU, and we're, you know, we're we're passing policies here on this dial that are encouraging, you know, ADUs and this type of work. So I I am intrigued by the idea of if you're doing new construction, so not an existing duplex, but if you are creating an ADU through attachment around increasing that firewall separation, because I think we're a community that is ripe for that, and I I anticipate we will be seeing more of that type of ADU. You know, we'll be seeing home home construction investment with like the attached ADUs. I would be interested in what that could look like instead of sprinkling, but the but the but the firewall.
Do you know those studies about sprinklers? No, I we always base everything off of, you know, the residential or building code and those required separations. You know, I I think if it was something that the industry thought was necessary, they would get that into the code. Granted, it takes some time to do that, but if they wanted to increase that fire separation, it probably would have been done by now.
Okay.
I think this whole argument surrounds, you know, two things when it comes to fire safety. It's early notification from smoke alarms, and then what the sprinkler system does that's a complement to smoke alarms is it suppresses that fire. So increasing that separation, if you don't have sprinklers, what that does is prevents that fire from spreading from one area to the of the home to the next.
Do we require hardwire fire detection in like significant rehabs or new construction?
They're not, it's not required to be hardwired, but but they need to communicate. So a lot of Wi-Fi systems are used.
Okay.
But but that is the requirement.
Okay, all right. Then I'm satisfied. I know what Ms. Hoppe was referring to was a commercial, which does require the sprinkling and the residential, so that that fire separation is a little different. So thank you for answering my questions, and I'm I'm satisfied with where we are.
Does a residential fire sprinkler system require a separate tap, a separate line into the house?
It depends on the system. Typically, with what we'd be requiring, yes, a 13D system, Steve, that requires a separate tap, right?
Not necessarily. So it it's usually jurisdiction-dependent on the direction they decide whether you require or allow a separate tap for the fire sprinkler system. But for example, what we're looking at in the city of Arbada, when this comes up in the next couple of months, is it's going to be the same line that is for your domestic water. It just tap, it tees off before there's any control about to shut that off. So that's the the same line for domestic water.
Which might be, what, the minimum size, about a 5/8 water line into a house now?
5/8 by 3/4, something.
Okay.
I think in the survey, we did see at least one water district that would require its own tap.
Okay. And so in a multi, in a in a townhome situation, And so, in a multi, in a, in a townhome situation, would, and I'm used to more commercial buildings, would you, would you see a townhome having a main building system that's more like a commercial building?
Yeah, and that's something that can be done. We're actually talking about one particular townhome development in Arvada, that we're exploring that exact option, to where you come into what we call a riser room.
Yeah.
And then it goes throughout the entire building. The challenge that we're trying to overcome now, and I think there's a pretty simple solution to that, is identifying if a sprinkler system goes off in, you know, the second townhome of five, that we just know which townhome it's occurring in. And that, it's all stuff that can be done by the fire sprinkler designers in conjunction with the building and fire departments. So, that can be done.
But that obviously would require a larger tap, a separate tap into the main to provide the volume which you're going to need to.
Right, and it would have to be engineered to determine what that size is. Typically, the tap fees when you come to the fire sprinkler systems are a little bit different, the way that I understand it for, as opposed to domestic use, because you're not getting a lot of that wastewater coming off of it. It's as needed.
Thank you. Additional discussion on this item? Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. And like so many other things that I'm learning as a member of this council, this is one that is very, very complex, and we've got, we've got very good arguments on both sides. We hear from the fire departments about fire safety, and that's obviously very important. And then on the other side, we hear about the significant addition of the cost of a new building that's equipped with a sprinkler system. So, I don't know, at this point, I, I guess I'd have to see how we, we actually write this out, but I can't say I'm going to support requiring sprinklers in townhomes.
Counselor Weaver.
I just have one question. The deal-breaker for me is if it does require another tap, because we have eight different water districts in the city, and a tap is 30 grand for water and another 30 for sewer if you're doing a new build on a, on a single-family home. And so, requiring a separate tap for those sprinklers is something we've got to understand how our constituents are going to be affected with each one of those water districts before we pass a carte blanche sprinkler rule, I think.
And just back to the 5/8 line, will a 5/8 line put out a, put out a fire or mitigate the, I'm thinking about when I take a shower and somebody else turns on the shower, or the dishwasher's running, it's not, it's not that much of a shower.
Yeah, you know, there's some additional engineering that goes into it, but it's all, you know, primarily pressure-based, and at least my experience in the water districts that I deal with in the city of Wheat Ridge, pressure's really good. So, a lot of these can be engineered, it's just, it's different spacing with the sprinkler heads. It's different sprinkler head types that can reduce the amount of flow. So, there's things that can be done, and we do see in the ones that are required based on other fire code reasons, that usually a 3/4 inch tap is sufficient.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Weaver.
With all due respect, Mayor, if your sprinkler goes off, I don't think you should get in the shower.
Well, I usually keep the water so hot in the shower that it almost ignites me.
Me too.
Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, in the summary of the water district feedback, they, one of the implementation challenges and lessons learned is that the meter sizing and tap fees, that developers often need to upsize from a 3/4 to a 1-inch, is what the water district said. So, and potentially doubling tap fees.
If there is consensus to add townhomes, one of the things that we would do, based in large part from the developer feedback, is have that be a delayed applicability, so it wouldn't go into effect January 1 with the rest of the code. And a big part of that, well, there are a couple of big parts of that. Number one, we have some water districts that haven't dealt with this at all. So, Valley has some experience, Conmudeal has the most experience, Wheat Ridge Water has no experience, so we need some time to work with our water districts so that we understand, they understand, and we understand what their requirements will be. And I also think it's appropriate to allow our townhome developers and buyers to anticipate that cost, so I want them to have a longer runway. So, once we get to that point, if there is consensus, just know that our intent is to have that be a longer implementation period.
Have you had discussions with the development community about this item?
Yes, we heard from, maybe, I think we sent it to a dozen and heard from maybe eight or so, I'm forgetting now what I put in that survey feedback. I think increased, you know, what I appreciated about the developer feedback, it wasn't hell no. It's measured, significantly more measured than six years ago when we asked for feedback. I think in part because they're seeing that, that requirement increasingly in peer communities. They acknowledge that there's other, you know, there's, there are some townhomes that put sprinklers in because of other site planning advantages in terms of high fire access and setbacks. But certainly, tap fees, predictability for homebuyers, maintenance of the systems, and costs were the themes that we've heard from them before and that they raised again. So, I think folks are understanding of how to implement those requirements because they're seeing them more frequently. And, you know, we thought the delayed implementation was a really good strategy, you know.
And have we, do we have any evidence or information about the impact on insurance premiums if you, if you put in a system?
It's been a mixed bag. We've, we had one member from our Building Code Advisory Board call his insurance provider and say, what would my premium be if I had it or not in a single detached? It wasn't a huge difference. You know, I think insurance is hard, it's just a difficult industry right now. So, yes, generally, the consensus is you may see some savings. Insurance is a consideration on our timeline for this overall adoption, because we think having the 24 code by January may see some savings. So, it's been hard to find a firm number, I think it's fair to say, but yes, I don't think it hurts.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Well, I don't want to summarize this, so Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From what I've heard at the table, I would ask for consensus to move forward with requiring sprinklers in townhomes, and that it has a delayed approach, and to not go into effect at the beginning of 2026. And that we utilize the 13D systems in our, in our code.
One, two, three, four, five, six. We have consensus to go forward at this time?
Thank you, that was very helpful. Thank you, Stephen. Okay, we're shifting gears to the other part of the packet. I labeled those amendments, 1 through 11. They're in pages four to seven, if you're following along, as I mentioned earlier. They are very in the weeds. I am not planning to go one by one into each of those topics. We did that with your appointed Building Code Advisory Board, who forwards their recommendation. The reason why we included those in your packet at that level of detail is, again, because I didn't want you to be surprised when you saw the ordinance later in October. I do want to highlight one of the amendments, number four, which talks about valuation, because some of you have gotten emails from your constituents about building permit fees. And one of the things that we've really struggled with in our building code, particularly with all these bits and pieces spread throughout different books and chapters, is how to explain to a customer how we calculate the building fees. And essentially, you know, I think there's a bit of assumption when you get your bill, or now you see it in the permit software, that it's a bit of a black box. We're doing all that we can over the last couple of years to daylight that. We've updated our website, so there's enough information there, you could probably try to calculate it yourself. We offer calculations, if you'd like an estimate, and the way our permit software is, you can see sort of more of a line item receipt. Valuation is a fundamental premise of how a building permit is calculated, and it's so baked into how permit fees are calculated that it's not defined anywhere. So, you'll see that, I think it's our, which one is it? Number, top of page five, we're proposing to add a definition of valuation, which essentially is a term we use to refer to the market value of both labor and materials in a project. The ICC, the International Code Council, twice a year actually publishes tables that sets the values, the cost of construction for different construction types. We know that those are not real costs. I forget what the number is, it's... Yes, it's, it's not truly the market value, but they set standardized values. The idea being that when somebody comes in for, say, a thousand-square-foot residential remodel, it's the same in both thousand-square-foot residential remodels. Now, if a customer gives us their own valuation and it's higher, our code compels us to take the higher of the two, but it's, again, trying to create some equity. It comes up the most often, the confusion comes up the most often with homeowner permits, where they think because they're doing the labor, their permit fee should be less. Our experience and many communities' experience is that actually homeowners' permits require significantly more staff time, because we're often doing more re-inspections, and that's okay. But again, the goal is that valuation is sort of clear and understood, so we have some equivalencies as we, as we set the fees for different permit types. So, I wanted you to know that, because I think what it does, it helps all of our conversations when we have customers come to us, and then eventually come to you, to understand how the permit fee is calculated. Again, I was not planning to go into each individual amendment, but we are happy to take questions on any of those other 11 topics or any other component of the code. The next time that you see us will be with a full ordinance for Chapter 5 in October. Building Code Advisory Board, again, will have the benefit of looking at that in detail in September, is all we have for preamble. No more study sessions, it wouldn't be another study session with council, right?
Thank you. Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with all the amendments that you have brought to us as the locals, local amendments, and then, and the fact that you're, you're platooning everything under the one, as far as like the administrative pieces go. I just have one quick question, though, because I feel like, and I could be wrong, but I feel like we have a mid-roof inspection requirement that's not necessarily a requirement in other communities, and I didn't see any conversation around, around that. Not that I disagree with it, I'm just asking, are we keeping it?
Yeah.
Or modifying it, or just, we're not doing anything to it, that's why it's not in here under the amendments?
Do you want to speak to that?
We are keeping mid-roof inspections. I couldn't, I don't remember that it was in there, but maybe it was. We went through so many, it's hard to tell each one. But we, if it is an amendment, we're keeping it.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Weaver.
I have no problem with any of the suggestions. I just wanted to thank you both. You guys run a code party like none other, and, no, I really do appreciate that, because your expertise is needed, and just thank you for your time.
Counselor Mayor Potem Stites.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I actually don't have an amendment or anything like that. I think I'm good with this. I actually just wanted to thank Renee. Couple of years ago, I had some issues with the building department and stuff with my business. I have gotten nothing but compliments from business owners and people in the city of Wheat Ridge who have tried to open a business and, and do inspections and stuff since Charles Abbott took over, and, and I think you're a big part of that. So, I just wanted to thank you for bringing some process and some civility to how all that goes. So, I really thank you guys for, for helping us, us need to make sure that our businesses and stuff can get open a lot faster, so thank you.
Counselor Holte.
All right, so I blame Councilmember Hoppe for bringing up the mid-roof inspection, because that was the talk of the town in 2018, 2017? Yeah, 2017. Yeah, it was like all we talked about on Facebook, leaving ladders out. Is there anything else in our code that's kind of unique like that, that like really stands out? I mean, I'm not questioning the cleanup, I have, I'm actually totally fine, but I just, that was at a time that this very unique thing in Wheat Ridge was very well-known, and very frustrating to a lot of roofing contractors. Do we have any other sort of like standout, you know, we've been talking about embracing the quirky around here. Do we have anything else that's like really uniquely Wheat Ridge that you can think of that like we encounter a lot? Or is the mid-roof inspection...
Not that we encounter a lot, and I can say, in all of the Charles Abbott cities, they do mid-roof inspections, so it's not totally uncommon, I'm not sure.
We had a lot of out-of-state roofing contractors fled to Colorado as a result of that hailstorm, and our, our final assessment was that it was likely more, it wasn't, the feedback wasn't as much coming from our local contractors.
Yeah, I'm grateful for it, because I was in real estate for 18 years, and, you know, attended a lot of inspections, and there's a lot that's unknown during the roofing process, so I think, I'm really glad that that's staying, so.
I mean, the ice and water barrier portion of the mid-roof inspection is so critical here, because of the snow and dry rot on your eaves and stuff, so that's the only time we can see that.
Yeah.
So, that's why it's super, super important, and it, and the ice and water barrier is in the code, so the only way for us to see that would be at a mid-roof inspection. So, I think probably right, it was probably a lot of out-of-state contractors, and they just wanted to put that roof on and go to the next house.
They complained to the homeowners who had no idea, and then they complained on Facebook. Okay, thank you for all of your work on this. I can only imagine how much work it's been, and thank you also for a memo that was like pretty straightforward and easy to get through.
Lauren, do we collect sales tax, use tax when we collect, when we issue the permit?
Yes.
We do?
Yes.
And is there, and how do we, how do we calculate how much use tax is on there?
It's three and a half, let's see, it's the permit valuation times 60% times 3.5%.
It's 3.5% on 60% of the valuation. So, if your permit was $100,000, you'd pay 3.5% on $60,000.
And, and do we have some good data that supports the 60-40 split of labor to materials?
Tax and licensing came up with the use tax percentage, so I'm not sure how that was calculated.
I mean, that's a, that's a general rule of thumb, a lot, a lot of places use that.
60-40, 50-50, in that range. I've seen some cities...
Really?
Yeah, not all, but.
Yeah, you raise a good question. So, building permit fees, we typically update or sort of review in the budget cycle, so you see a couple of new fees when we come to you with the budget. We did do a review of all communities' building permits, and we are in the range, we're not the high end, we are maybe in the like third quartile, just above 50%. So, we didn't, we didn't change a lot of our fees as part of the budget cycle, because I think we're in the right ballpark.
And if, and I'm thinking particularly of homeowners, when they, when they pull the fee, and they're going to go to Home Depot to buy their stuff, and they're going to pay use tax at Home Depot, is the, is there a way for them to recover that double taxation?
Yes, yeah. We can issue a use tax certificate that they can sort of present at Home Depot, we do that for some bigger projects, or they can come back after the fact.
Okay, with their receipts and say, I paid this. Okay, thank you. Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mayor, and this all is, is very interesting. I think I'd probably classify the amount of information I don't know about building codes in the three-foot book. Yeah, that would fit in there. I guess my concern is that, that enough people are aware of what we're doing, what we're changing, and some of the things we're going to do, people that do know about building codes, and people that have experience with this sort of thing, that they have an opportunity or even the understanding that Wheat Ridge is changing our building code, and that by the time it comes to council, again, in the form of a, an ordinance, that they, we will have had enough people with the expertise have an opportunity to look at them and decide if there's, if it just makes sense. Yeah. I guess that, that's kind of, is there enough time from when, when we introduce this, will there be enough time for people to review what we're actually doing?
Yes, good question. So, whenever we do a code update like this, we come up with a communication plan. You know, because we don't have a state building code, you know, in California, the state adopts the code, and all contractors are in the same cycle. Our contractors, for better or worse, are used to working under different codebooks in every city that they work in. The 24 codes came out about a year ago, and so they, you know, we're not on the cutting edge of this, and we, we will make sure that we have clearly communicated to our contractors and our customers, not only that we've adopted the 24 codes, but we usually do sort of a quick sheet of what, you know, what should, what should you know about Wheat Ridge? And the, the more we can keep it to sort of a one-pageer, the better, which is why we try to be really focused with our local amendments. But yes, we will make sure this is clear with our contractors. I think frankly, the bigger change for them was a permitting switchover in last January. Most of the contracting community is accustomed to the periodic code updates, and they, they have trainings.
I thought the... I thought that to get it on one page would just shrunk the volume.
We will do that, yes. We'll do anything to keep it to one page.
Get some new readers, or two, two, Mayor. Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to ask, Lauren, are testing municipalities around us, Denver, Boulder, Aurora, have they all gone to the 2024s yet?
If they're not on it, they're in the process. I think Thornton might have been the first one to go to 24s. They have a ton of construction. No, I can't remember. What I thought you were going to ask was if we've had any follow-up from our contractor license shift, where we sort of more clearly said what's tested or untested, and it's been very well-received. It's more simple to navigate, it's more predictable, so that's been positive. That was another big communication push we had with our contractors.
Yeah, I asked to, just to address Councilmember Larson's concern, you know, so Wheat Ridge doesn't do, we don't test our contractors for them to get their license in Wheat Ridge, but they do have to test in Aurora, Boulder, Denver, and we accept that. And that's a lot of the smaller municipalities that do that. But our Building Code Advisory Board, we have professionals in the industry on that board, so we have an architect, we have a builder, we have an engineer, and so they're the ones that like really reviewed it with the planning staff before it came to us.
All right, additional discussion on this item. Do we have consensus to move all of these items forward? We do, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all, thank you for joining us, we appreciate it. Great discussion, thanks so much for putting this together. Okay, that concludes the discussion action items. I think our next point of business would be staff reports. Mr. Goff.
I think that's enough from staff to save anything.
Okay. You've probably heard enough from our elected officials, too, but I'm going to, I'll open it up for elected officials' reports. Anyone has a report to report, raise your hand. Counselor Holte.
Thank you. I just wanted to share that Cole Haslip and I have begun our, commenced our tour of the boards and commissions to solicit their input on the update to our legislative agenda. Cole and I met with the Idea Committee last week, and this week we will be meeting with the, I think, we're doing Sustainable Wheat Ridge, we have two this week. Wait, y'all want to just sit here and wait for me to look at my calendar? We are doing the Parks and Rec Board, and then also Sustainable Wheat Ridge, and it's just, we've only had one, but just, it's really exciting. People are excited to hear that we're taking a bigger role at the Capitol in advocating for what's best for Wheat Ridge, and they're really grateful that we are taking the time to not just share what we're doing, but ask what's important to them. And so it's just, it's a really good dialogue, and he's not in the room, but I really want to give a shout-out to Cole, because he and I, he's, I'll be spending more time with Cole than just about anybody in the next month. We have, I think, six different boards and commissions we're visiting, so we've started that, and I'm looking forward to seeing what they get back to us later this fall.
Thank you. Additional reports? Counselor Larson.
Just real quick, Mayor, thank you. This last Thursday, Parks and Rec Director Karen O'Donnell and myself had the pleasure of presenting the Wheat Ridge story to the Jeffco Council on Aging, their monthly meeting, and we had an opportunity to go over some of the fun things that are happening that included Clear Gray Crossing and the projects at Luthon Legacy and at the Miller Ridge Foothills Regional Housing Development, and some other things that we're doing Parks and Rec-wise. It was a very, our presentation was, I thought, very well-received, and I look forward to the next time we have an opportunity to meet with the Jeffco Council on Aging.
Okay, thank you. Additional reports? Hearing none, we will be back here next Monday night on the 25th, I think it is, for a regular council meeting. And so if there's no more business to come before us, we will stand adjourned. Everyone, please drive safely and slowly through our city and get home safely and securely. Thank you.